Session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise and State of Arizona. It will be held on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Building, 915 South Torreville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you call the board please?
Mayor Pro Tem Lewis Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacchino?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you. For our moment of silence, I'd like us to continue keeping those that are affected by this virus worldwide, but certainly our Bisbee family in our thoughts. If you join with me if there may please. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody, welcome. Good to see everybody. I have no proclamations. My only announcements are the fact that unfortunately for those that aren't aware, the statistical information that we're receiving is indicating that COVID-19 is actually increasing in Arizona. And this is going by many different indicators. This weekend, we had reported over a thousand new cases over the weekend and 24 deaths. The hospital, one indicator that has been used previously by the governor is the number of available hospital beds. And statewide, eighty percent of those beds are currently being occupied by COVID-19 patients. We are far, far lucky in Cochise County and certainly Bisbee with a total of three cases in Bisbee and potentially two deaths. Moving on to call to the public, Ms. Landers?
Thank you. Bisbee Senior Center, Bisbee Senior Centers Association. Lori L. Lewis, Vice President. Bisbee Senior Center located at 300 Collins Road is the place beautiful people in all their infinite variety come to smile and joke, be with other people in the community, share their experience and skills, and rejuvenate their souls. Charles R. Christwell, Director of the Bisbee Senior Association, has charge of day-to-day operations at the center, which is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Christwell states, playing games like bridge, poker, bingo, and Wii bowling is only part of what goes on at the center. We have a weekly art class, Tai Chi for both beginners, and our advanced Tai Chi business group, leather tooling, and wood carving. Our arts and craft skills meet weekly, and their work is on display and for sale in the little craft store. The center has recently opened its food pantry. We have delivery to the homebound of non-perishable items, canned goods, and supplies. The BSA thrift store and the medical equipment lending closet are open daily. AARP assists seniors with their taxes annually. The Red Cross holds its blood drive here every other month. Blood pressure and glucose readings are scheduled. Our second Saturday breakfasts are famous in the area. Monthly reservations, please dinners out and about the county are another favorite. The BSA Board of Directors is headed up by Daniel Smith, President, Lori Lewis, Vice President, Shirley Jones, Secretary, Treasurer Larry Thomas, Members-at-Large Daniel Flores, Barbara Johnson, and Joan Poole. General membership meetings are held monthly with potluck supper following. We are a happy family of seniors, Christwell explains. When seniors come to the center, they feel the respect they richly deserve and contribute to something real and present. They realize they are part of a family. They always leave with a sparkle in their eye and a spring in their step. This is our very great pleasure and the very reason the Senior Association and the center exist. Reach the Bisbee Seniors Association and the center at (520) 432-2167 for more information and to become involved. We are stopped on the Bisbee bus route. All are always welcome.
Thank you.
Donna Pulling, good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to take a moment to give a hearty welcome to Mike Turan as the new Grade Three Operator at the San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant. Mike was a valued employee of the City of Bisbee for over twenty years and has been hired as the Grade Three Operator of the wastewater plant as a Jacobs employee. He will continue offering his extensive knowledge and experience in collections as well as aerobic wastewater treatment operations with the same dedication and commitment as before. We are fortunate that he has agreed to resume his duties as Grade Three Operator. Mike Turan is a Bisbee native and a Bisbee High School graduate. He began his career in wastewater collections and treatment at the New Bulge Plant after graduation in 1996 and learned every aspect of that system to obtain his Grade Three Certificate in collections. He was transferred to the newly constructed San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant in 2006 and worked to obtain his Grade Three Operator Certificate and aerobic wastewater treatment systems. He served there until three years ago. Mike Turan is an invaluable resource to Bisbee, and I want to thank him for returning to serve us again and wish him the very best. Thank you, Mike. Donna Pulling.
Thank you.
Bisbee Vogue Inc., Mayor and Council, please find attached a letter of support for opening the pool for 2020 and request for maintenance for the pool during the summer of 2020 and beyond. To the City Council, many Bisbee residents have asked when the pool will be opened. When we observed the pool today, Monday, June 1st, it was obvious that the pool has not been maintained. It has a small amount of alcohol water, making it a good breeding site for mosquitoes, which in turn can spread disease. The green water will be a strain on the pump and filtering system. The solar panels have not been used, making the investment by the Copper Queen Hospital without value. The pool has been neglected and must be taken care of. We urgently need to take steps to ensure that all water systems are safe to use after a prolonged facility shutdown to minimize the risk of diseases associated with water. We need regular maintenance to protect the investment that this community has already made in the Bisbee Pool. Bisbee Vogue Inc. is currently seeking funds for the Bisbee Outdoor Recreation Center Board. The vision for Higgins Hill Park is to have an outdoor space with basketball, pickleball, a swimming pool, and an outdoor fitness center for all Bisbee residents to use. The pool is an integral part of this endeavor. Additionally, the Centers for Disease Control have stated that there is no evidence that COVID-19 can be spread to humans through the use of recreational waters. Swimmers, as well as others using outdoor facilities, can protect themselves by following safe practices, social distancing, and everyday preventative actions. We urge you to maintain the Bisbee Pool and to open the pool with appropriate safe practices for the health and wellness of all residents. Sincerely, Deborah J. Young, Ph.D., Executive Board Member, Bisbee Vogue.
Thank you.
This is from Kaylin Cummings. To the City Council, the Bisbee Pool is one of the best recreation and fitness spots in Bisbee and an important part of our city. Having a pool is important to the community's health and well-being for both adults and children. The pool provides jobs for our youth. The Copper Queen Community Hospital donated solar panels, which kept the water at an average temperature of eighty degrees Fahrenheit. The pool is strongly supported by the community, as evidenced by the thousands of dollars raised by the Friends of the Bisbee Pool. CDC guidelines are quite straightforward and easy to follow. There is no evidence that COVID-19 can be spread to humans through the use of recreational waters. Swimmers can protect themselves by following safe swimming practices, social distancing, and everyday preventative actions. In some cases, use of the pool is limited to only staff and swimmers who live in the local area. We recommend a soft opening for lap swimming only as soon as possible. Lap swimming naturally is spaced six feet apart in our six-lane pool. This is a good way to learn new systems of sanitation. Cleaning and disinfecting is recommended at least once per day. Entry, for example, could be through an outside gate, as with other pools in southern Arizona. Showers need to be turned off, although the restrooms would remain open. We may need to change deck layouts to ensure that in this standing and seating areas, individuals can remain at least six feet apart from those they don't live with. All city employees, and in fact, all residents, may be exposed to viruses in our daily lives. For example, in order to minimize this risk, the city has eliminated exposure for sanitation workers by placing dumpsters on Tombstone Canyon. In order to minimize risk for lifeguards, face shields, masks, and gloves would be required. We recommend that lifeguards who are actively lifeguarding are not also expected to monitor hand washing or social distancing of others. Training of lifeguards and clearly posted regulations on the use of the pool are needed. The pool requires maintenance now. It has been neglected and must be taken care of. We urgently need to take steps to ensure that all water systems are safe to use after a prolonged facility shutdown to minimize the risk of diseases associated with water. The pool is currently one-third full of water, growing algae from a perfect place for mosquitoes, which may in turn spread other diseases. The community has demonstrated...
Thank you.
From Donna Pulling regarding item number four, ambulance subscription. Mayor and Council, I have a few comments about the wording of the ambulance subscription ordinance. One, the ambulance fees are deleted from the original ordinance and referred to in the fee schedule, in quotes, as authorized by the state. The exact charges should be listed, just as every other charge for services provided by the city. The public has a right to know when you're being at the fee schedule what the charge is for ambulance service. Two, in the past, non-emergency, non-transport assists have been offered as a courtesy service to the public as part of the taxes we pay for ambulance services. These non-emergency, non-transport assists have minimal financial impact on the city since they are performed when the firefighters are not on, not out on the call. This should remain as part of the service provided to the taxpayers. Should the council decide to charge for these services as a way of generating revenue, the charges should be specifically listed in the fee schedule, just like every other service charged by the city. Three, additionally, there are several typographical errors in the opening sentence. There should be a comma after fines, and fee schedule refers to a specific document and should be capitalized in referencing the fee schedule. Please vote against this ordinance or table it until the changes have been discussed and the exact charges are made part of the fee schedule. Thank you, Donna Pulling, Board three.
Thank you.
Bisbee Public Pool Open from Joan Reichel. Please consider opening the city pool for this summer. I use the pool and appreciate the opportunity to see the community use a valuable skill, swimming. There are challenges to be sure, but we can learn the risks and avoid them. The pool is well-ventilated outside, and the number of people can be limited. Thank you for your time and consideration, Joan Reichel.
Thank you.
Patricia Hill, opening city pool. I am in favor of the pool being opened. Would like the kids to have access. Patricia Hill.
Thank you.
Fred Miller, my name is Fred Miller and I live in Warren. I was on the charter review committee that proposed the changes to the charter that you are considering tonight. We had seven months of meetings to try and form this living document that is at the core of how our city operates. I hope you will take our recommendation as is. Don't make changes and vote to put them on the ballot in November. I appreciated the opportunity for service to our community. Thank you, Fred Miller, owner of Copper City.
Thank you.
Swimming Pool, Margot McCartney, please add my comment tonight. I'm urging the council to open the Bisbee Pool with appropriate limits on numbers of people. Margot McCartney, San Jose area.
Thank you.
Claire Chaffey, Mayor and Council, this has been a very trying time for all of us. People have been unemployed and didn't get checks yet. Businesses were closed and didn't get their assistance. People worried about paying their bills and how to feed their families. Then we have a mask versus no mask situation. This has pitted people against each other and against people visiting Bisbee. And you on council and staff should be making a good example for all. We are open now for the most part except City Hall and buildings. Why is that? People can social distance, have the meetings outside. Council has put through ordinances and made decisions all the way back to the first one on March 17th, 2020, the first submission of the nuisance ordinance. Why not just do the necessary items until the public is able to be at the meetings? You have just skipped over the process of open government. You have taken away our rights as citizens, as we have the right to fill up that room with people to talk about an agenda item and the call to the public. You are having a hearing tonight, and what are we supposed to do? Throw emails at you? You are all elected officials, which means you represent us, not the other way around. And as far, and as for staff, our tax dollars are what pay your salaries. So maybe, just maybe, all of you might want to start thinking more about the citizens and less about what ordinance you will pass next to screw us out of more money. Think more of ways to bring in money. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you. That's it?
That's all.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember.
I move that you pay a council table in the amount of $162,216.33.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second. Any questions? Ms. Bell?
On page 11, let me see, Mr. Howard here, there's a $3,500 charge for sewer line replacement, and it just says it, 326. Oh, I didn't see this.
Is it stealth mode?
That charge, that charge was for a repair that was done, but we initially didn't know that the line there was a main that actually does run within our alleyway. So the trench was open, the repair was nearly complete, and the contractor that was hired originally by a resident went ahead and completed the repair to our sewer lane, under the supervision of our collections staff. So they were done with it, but there was no reason for us to go in and bring in other material. We had it all there. I said, go ahead and complete that, and he was okay for that.
Okay, and where's it at, just as 320?
Where's the, it's off of Hazard, I believe?
Allen McLaren.
Yes, Allen McLaren.
Thank you, sir.
Five.
That's it? Let's check the mirror.
On page six, has to do with the water parts. You have a charge of $110 at Garfield Park. Grassy Park has a charge of 426 plus change, and City Park has a charge of 110, I think. We're going to move to it. Why are this?
The Grassy Park one, I know for sure, we actually, we started watering a lot more because it's time to water, but we also had a water leak. The, our park staff was, it was on the weekend, in fact, it was operations manager that was down in the area, and he noticed it, and we repaired that. The water usage is a little bit over and that is because of water. The other two are fairly normal compared to last year, so.
So the leak, was it outside the bathrooms or inside the?
It was the irrigation.
This is like the fifth time.
It is, and this one was, it was the time rag malfunction. It was water, it was overwater in the area.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? All those in favor of paying the council table, second to the last, say the aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, yes. Item number two, approval of the consent agenda. Item eight, approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor and Council held on May 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Do we have motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item eight.
I'll second that. Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Under all business, item three, discussion possible approval of ordinance O-20-09, amending Article 16.2, Clean Line Regulations and Fees, and providing for repeal and severability. This has come before us previously. And if anybody has any questions, Ms. Coleman will be ready to answer them. Do we have any questions? If we don't have any questions, do we have a motion?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why did we raise the, or I shouldn't say raise, but lower the adult age? When it was previously sixteen and over and had been dropped?
Yeah, well, we did make some adjustments based, first, we started the age group higher, and then, do you remember what Doug had said about the adult age?
I don't. I just know that it was moved up because of Freeport.
Freeport McMoran wanted that lowest age level to be the higher one, and then Doug had provided us with the new age requirement for the adults. So that came from your manager.
Any other questions? Do we have motion?
I move to approve ordinance O-20-09, amending Article 16.2, Regulations and Fees, and Providing for Repeal and Severability.
I'm second.
Ms. Coronado, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discussion of the possible approval of the notice to adopt ordinance O-20, sorry, 20-10, amending Article 4.5.1, rates, and establishing Article 4.5.2, ambulance subscriptions, and providing for repeal and severability. This has come back to us, also, questions? Here it is, undoing the motion.
I move to approve the notice of the death of the law ordinance, here, that 20-10, amending Article 4.5.1, rates, and establishing Article 4.5.2, ambulance subscriptions, and providing for repeal and severability.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Coronado, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Me.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes six to one. Under business, item number five, discussion of possible direction or action on petition received from Monica Patience regarding item, sub, pardon, regarding items, lock in Eastmont and right of way between 201 and 205 Oak Street. And I will ask Mr. Higgins to address this.
Yes, I was up there this morning, and it's true that there are three small motorbikes parked there, and there's a small parking lot which has a number of cars there. They all seem to be there neatly. They're not in really the roadway or in any way, for that matter. I didn't really see an issue. And so I think that I would like to, well, I don't like to make a logic that we disregard this petition. I don't believe I have any validity.
I have any comments?
We need a second for that meeting. I'll second that. Ms. Hanson?
I would like to see Public Works look at that area, that I think that's the one that we have talked about before, where it's, there's a house that's built.
I have looked at this a number of times. I believe Mrs. Patience's house is the one you're talking about, that they're doing. The actual public land in that area is very narrow. Just the way that, that the parcels were parceled up. I'm not sure what, what else you were.
Well, I know that there was a house that was built onto the...
So the, the actual garage is, the garage that Mr. Higgins, I believe you were referencing, that garage actually extends into the public, uh, land area. I don't want to, I know Mr. starts talking to Zola Ward about this. I want to say it's eight to 10 inches that it sticks out into the, into the public land. It's not very much, but it does stick out into the public land.
Are people able to turn around in that area?
No. You could, no, you can't turn around in that area. The only way that you could turn around in that area is if you actually entered into that garage and made a three-point turn.
So how would you, if, for instance, delivering newspapers wherever, you'd have to go all the way around and go down Youngblood?
No, this is, this is actually north of Youngblood. So when you pass Youngblood, is it that? I believe if you go up north, there's another private parking area. It's probably, if you go just past that, there's a small turnaround area. There's my foot. It is possible to turn around, and I believe that's where this... There's my foot, it is possible to turn around, and I believe that's where, um, Miss Patience, um, makes her turn around. She travels up the hill, gets into that larger public land area, and is able to turn around there.
So the issue is the fact that they can't turn around at the dead end because of the, of the parking and?
I believe the issue is that when Miss Patience parks next to her house, um, it's very narrow. There are even, if she doesn't park extremely close to the wall, um, there are even times that cars cannot get past. Um, and if there are, is, the, the, the people that parked in this garage, when she's parked next to her house, have very difficult time backing out of their, their garage and getting down the hill. I, I, it's an issue, I believe it's between the two residents.
Thank you.
Miss, uh, we, we're acting not on, if I might, not on, um, anything other than her petition. And her petition has action, uh, desired in that. And so that's really what we're acting on. Are we going to accept her action, or are we not? Um, and, um, I, I believe then what you're, uh, really indicating is that we do not accept her action. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That, that was the intent of the petition.
I may not have stated it clearly, but that was fine.
Yes, sir.
Who did you say?
All right. So the, the motion is that, uh, we do not act upon her desired action. Or we do not accept her desired action. All right. Without clarification. Um, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now let me get back to where I'm supposed to be. Item number, uh, six, public hearing on truth and tracts, eh, fact. Item number six, public hearing on truth and taxation and public hearing and discussion on FY twenty twenty dash twenty-one proposed budget for the city of Bisbee. Ms. Bagley.
Hi. Hello. Um, this is, this is a public hearing, um, for, for the truth and taxation of this. Uh, that was published, and also a public hearing on the budget.
Thank you, I'm not going to open the public hearing. And, uh, ask if we have any correspondence, uh, from anybody, um, re, uh, in favor of this. Do we have any correspondence, any letters, phone calls, snail mail, email, whatever, hearing none. Do we have any in opposition? Any correspondence whatsoever? Okay, hearing none, then I will, uh, close the public hearing. Counselor. We will, um, move on. Which is item number seven. And that is discussion of possible approval of resolution R twenty-nine seventeen, adopting the final budget FY twenty twenty-one for the city of Bisbee, adopting the alternate expenditure limitation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, I did have one thing I wanted to say, to make it very, very clear to anybody who's watching this, as well as anybody in the council. As we know, we will be receiving some federal funding, and the federal funding does not affect our, um, uh, expenditure limitation. Okay? So, uh, we are completely safe in, in passing this and accepting that federal funding, because it is federal, it is exempt. Okay, Ms. Bagley?
Uh, so this is a resolution to approve the final budget for, um, FY twenty twenty-one, um, in the amount of, of twenty-two million, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you, ma'am, council, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Giacamino.
When you look at, uh, the budget requirement, it says that, uh, we have, um, a vacant seaport fire today. I don't know if I can answer this, stop me if I can't. Uh, fi- firefight and a rover, when this goes into effect, are we going to immediately open this? Since it's being passed with budget?
I think they're, they're already, um, in this fiscal year's budget, they just have lost some people. Um, so it's not new positions?
No, I'm not saying they're new, I'm saying are we going to fill them, are we going to actively go out to fill them, because they're not filled right now.
I feel, I believe they have been filled, so when this was printed, it, it may have been a vacancy.
Even the rover? The rover position has also been filled?
I would have to follow, I do not.
I believe that she's made a different, um, decision about how he wanted to handle that particular opening.
But, yeah, the, the point was is, the positions haven't been closed waiting to do this. They've been opened the whole time, and, and, and they are in the current budget as well as this proposed budget.
Right, right.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty dash seventeen, adopting the final budget and alternate expenditure on the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, Ms. Cornetta.
Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number, and, and thank you, um, Ms. Bagley and Ms. Coleman, for your job well done on this budget. We all appreciate it very much. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of T S P R S pension funding policy. Ms. Bagley. Enlighten us, please.
Okay, so this is the annual pension funding policy that T S P R S now requires of all, um, of their participants, um, to explain how we plan to pay off our pension liability. Um, since basically we were all able to pay our minimum required payment, that's our plan at this time. We don't have a plan to pay it off ahead of time, so it, um, it should be paid off at two thousand four and seven. Although, um, I mean, just looking at twenty, twenty, um, eighteen actuaries versus twenty nineteen, it's increased. So our line on this increased, so I don't know.
Right, we, we unfortunately don't know, Ms. Bagley. And to make it even worse, the, uh, the fund is drastically underperforming, uh, this year. Uh, and so there are many, uh, projections. Uh, it doesn't help us, but every city is in the same position. Um, and I will say also, just for those that have an idea that we should somehow pay up sums, that, uh, as an example, the county of, um, Coquenino County, uh, paid twenty million dollars into their fund thinking that they would get ahead of the curve, and it didn't lower anything. The city of Prescott has paid, I could be wrong, but I believe it's ten million into theirs to try to get ahead of the curve, and it had no effect whatsoever. And so, um, I endorse hardly us paying what we have to pay, and that we need to continue, as I will, in attempting to get reform. Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Do we have a motion, ma'am?
I move to approve the T S P R S pension funding policy.
My second.
Those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, discussion of possible approval to enter into the CARES Act Airport Agreement, Mr. Harlow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, this is the agreement that we are required to enter into in order to receive our twenty thousand dollars that we've already been notified that we are rewarded. Um, the, uh, the F A A has drafted that and asked in the direction that no changes be made to that. Um, any questions?
Do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the forty thousand dollars, man? How was it figured out, did they share any of that information?
No, I don't know how they, I don't know that's figured.
What is it for?
It's for, uh, we can use it for any purpose for which airport revenues may be awfully used. So it's pretty widely, it's a pretty wide range what we can use it for. Um, where we recently purchased the upgrades to our, uh, fuel system, and so, so I'm going to look at that.
Is this a one-time thing, or is it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's a one-time, one-time, um, plan.
Yes, sir, it's part of the stimulus package that Congress put through. Uh, and just so that you would know, I, uh, I contacted, uh, our members of Congress, asking them bits for why, and to date, they've been unable to give me an answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, um, do we have a, a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, I, I probably.
It was not actually a question, I just want to make sure, clarification. In the contract itself, it said that you cannot use the money for any new project, however.
That, I, I'm not sure.
I read that in, in one of them, that you had to be, um, without amending the contract.
Oh, yes, yes, I guess.
Okay.
Any other questions in hearing, uh, Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Oh, there's no motion, I'm sorry. My apologies, I jumped the gun.
You did jump the gun.
Okay.
I did.
We both did.
If anybody wants to give us money, I'm just saying, sure.
Take it.
All right. Well, let's, let's back up. Somebody, uh, like to make a motion to accept this money?
I moved in into the CARES Act Airport Agreement, second.
Let's try it again. Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item eleven, ten, discussion of possible approval to repair the Solzer Submersible Sewer Pump for the Mule Golf Lift Station. I'm always sure I've said this before.
You do have. What it was, previous was that we purchased a new one for a, a backup.
Right.
Um, just a little bit about the, the well itself, has two pumps in there, and we try to keep a, a backup on hand, um, just in case something happens, well, that happened. And so now we put the new one into place, and we need to take that old one and have that one repaired so that we have something on the shelf, just in case that happens again. Especially going into our monsoon season, um, we do get some infiltration, groundwater infiltration into our collection system. Um, we would, we run into some problems if we had to run on one pump, so.
Or would anybody have an issue? Or one would have a definite issue?
Yes, yes, we do.
Do, uh, thank you, sir, if you have any questions? Ms. Hanson?
So the pump that is being repaired, has it been repaired before?
No, that one was a new purchase. We purchased it from, um, Phoenix, uh, Phoenix Pumps.
The one that's being repaired?
The one that's going to be repaired, that was a new purchase, now it needs to be repaired.
How long ago did we purchase that?
I don't know how long that one was purchased, I don't need that one was purchased before, I can't. The new one that did purchase for a backup was the one that's now in place. So I don't know how long this one has been, how long ago we purchased it. Um, we did check to see if it was under warranty, and this one, this one is not under warranty.
That was, that was going to be my next question.
Yes, it is not under warranty, we did purchase it from them, that's why we went to this in, um, kind of, sort of, oh, no.
Do you have a question? Yes, sir?
Does the repair have a warranty?
Yes, it does.
How long?
I believe this one will report. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve repairing the Solzer Submersible Sewer Pump for the Mule Golf Lift Station.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, second to first, pay them aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Item eleven, discussion of possible approval of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and the Bisbee Senior Association for the Bisbee Senior Center. Ms. Coleman?
Hi, thank you, um, so we have a very old, uh, agreement that helps bear, we remember it, it's written into, I think it was nineteen ninety-one, oh, uh, I believe it was nineteen ninety-one, or somewhere in there. So, um, I did have an opportunity to, um, sit down with the senior center manager, take a look at their financials. And we both agree it would be a good idea every year to review their financial statement ahead of our budget process so that we can determine up to what extent we would be able to continue to help them to fund their operation. So this pretty much just simplifies, um, some of the wording that was in the original agreement, and makes it clear that, uh, we are going to sit down every year and have a discussion.
Great. Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and the Bisbee Senior Association for the Senior Center.
I'll second that. Ms. Cornetta?
Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O twenty dash eleven, accepting the transfer of real property held by the mining claim in the Saginaw Neighborhood. Ms. Coleman?
Hi, so this is a continuation of discussions we've had in the past, or permission I provided in the past, about how to, um, provide some affordable housing. Um, currently, I'm working with Jay Machet at C E O to submit an application for the P W E A A grant which came out of the CARES Act. Um, we are focusing on the Saginaw Neighborhood. The mail will survey out to those residents today. I will be having a phone call with them on Monday. Um, and an important component of the grant applications is that we identify ten percent of the properties in their neighborhood to approve, um, which would be eleven parcels. Um, we, we have control of two of those parcels currently. We continue to work on, um, obtaining assignment of liens, uh, pursuing some eminent domain actions, and getting control of more properties. And in reviewing the subdivision map, it. And in reviewing the subdivision map, it, um, just jumped out at me that there are areas within the subdivision that were not platted or marked out in parcels. And so, if you go up A Street, the left-hand side of A Street, there's room for three or four lots there that were never platted. Um, before you made the turn to your left on Douglas, Old Douglas Road, there's room for three or four parcels that were never platted. There's room at the end of C Street for parcels, there's room at the end of N Street for parcels. So, um, I have reached out to the company that currently has control of the mining claims. I have a conversation with them tomorrow at twelve thirty to discuss the possibility of, uh, plating and obtaining additional parcels within Saginaw for the purpose of community revitalization.
Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty dash eleven, accepting the transfer of real property held by mining claim in the Saginaw neighborhood.
Second.
If you have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Protem.
Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, discussion of possible approval of resolution R twenty dash eighteen, authorizing an election on certain proposed city charter amendments to be held on November third, twenty twenty. This will be the date of the general election, um, this is the result of the Charter Review Committee which is required to go through the charter, uh, which they did over a seven month period. Uh, a lot of good, uh, input, a lot of hard work, uh, was done on this. And you have been provided this, uh, last Thursday, I think, uh, to go through, and, uh, you'll see there's, uh, I'm the liaison to that, so, uh, I can answer questions and, uh, certainly Ms. Coleman was present, and she can answer questions in the unlegal here if there's any illegal issues, questions. Um, so, are there any questions? Start with Mr. Powell.
In, uh, in the discussion space, the mayor and council retain the final authority for determining exactly which of any provisions of this go before the public vote.
Yes.
Uh, will that decision be made at a later meeting? How, how is that going to work?
Now.
Now?
Yes.
So then, if we vote in favor of this, we're opposing, does that mean entire package?
No, you can go through and you can say, um, I don't want, I, I don't think we should have ads. And you can have that cut out if, if the majority of the council agrees with you.
Okay, I understand, thank you. And I have one question about the, uh, charter itself.
Yes, sir.
Uh, before it was worked on by these folks, section nine point one five, alignment of the ward boundaries, states that within twelve months of the effective date of this charter, using the nineteen eighty census official count, um, on the council shell, I don't understand, wh- why are we, why does it use the nineteen eighty census count?
Because that's when the first charter was, was drafted.
Okay.
Yes.
No more questions.
Ms. Jacomino?
I, you, actually. Um, in section two point oh eight, why is it an added that the mayor can remove members of various states, um, shall appoint, um, why all of a sudden are you, uh, as the mayor positions doing, um, more power than, than before? Um, that's one.
Yeah, as, as you recall, that, uh, item was left, uh, it was up in the air as to how somebody got removed, um, and, uh, discussing this with legal, uh, and the city manager, it was the committees, uh, thought that if the mayor appoints, then the mayor, with consent of the, uh, council, should be able to, uh, indicate that this person, for whatever reason, is providing, uh, should no longer be a member of that committee.
So then it's providing more power to the mayor than, um, as been, you have done before, taking away power from the council when all seats are supposed to be fairly equal? Am I incorrect in that?
Well, seats aren't exactly equal, number one is, Jacomino.
Really?
Number. And number two is, there was no mechanism of removal, as I indicated prior to that. It was the Charter Review Committee that believed that we needed to have a mechanism of removal.
But what's with the mechanism prior to that you bring in for the council and we voted in your name to support your suggestion? So what's the difference?
This provides in writing how it's done. It was done previously, uh, without being done in writing.
So, I guess my next one, are you, you're gonna say something on that? Cause I have a lot of them, you wanna make a comment on that, go ahead. So the next one, two point one four, uh, where you have marked out no executive session, maybe held for the purpose of taking any legal action.
I can't hear you.
Um, on number two point one four, where it's marked out no executive session, maybe held for the purpose of taking any legal action, um, when has that ever happened? So, I guess, I guess my concern is, the times we have had executive session is personnel, um, so it's not gonna be when the state supersedes it, but we're taking, that seems to be taking that out. Does that make sense when I ask you?
You can add that.
My concern is that this is taking away the, um, the opportunity to do executive session when we need to, like for personnel. Is that not what that says?
No. This is, this is for the purpose of taking any, um, vote or decision. So in other words, you can go into executive session, but you have to come out.
Okay, like.
To actually make your decisionary vote.
Then I missed my page, that was my mistake. Um, who's the next one? Public hearing, uh, this has to do, it's, uh, on the dash three point oh nine D, within ten days, the city manager may reply in writing, blah, blah, blah. The mayor shall call a public hearing and it shall be held with the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Isn't that kinda doing away with due process if you do it in any other situation, they're given a specific timeframe in which to file, um, and this seems like, um, that takes away from due process, that decision? That's just my question.
This was direct input from the council, um, I could, uh, this was, uh, Ms. Coleman, do you have something?
Yeah, so, um, the Charter Review Committee was particularly concerned with the process for removal of the city manager, um, and with, um, guidance from legal, this is, um, the wording that they put forward in order to clarify the process.
Cause there's no, I mean, it seems like a time frame. I, I understand the previous time frame was ridiculous, but most, um, other places were like, for instance, I go to, like, a ten day SO, it's specific, it just seems like it, I don't know, steps were taken away. Um, on article, um, page five, on article, or number twelve, I should say, um, why is that completely removed? Rights and officers and employees preserved?
I can't hear you.
I said, why is number, um, sixteen point zero one removed completely? I'm just curious as to what the justification was for removing that? The rights and officers and employees preserved?
This, I believe, went to the, this section goes to the founding of the city and the founding of the charter, and since this was very specific to the very first implementation, it no longer applies.
Okay. Uh, so does that include the second one, sixteen point oh two also?
Right. The entitled succession in government article was specific to the founding document, and now we're, uh, a couple of revisions down the road and this had still survived.
So all the way through to sixteen?
Point oh nine.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Mr. Higgins, do you have any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Um, I just do wanna jump that, most of my questions.
Can you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I tell you.
Most of my questions got asked and answered, but I do wanna, um, jump back to section two point oh four because I don't think I completely understand what we're doing here. Cause it kinda looks to me like now we can vote in executive session? No.
No. No. It's taking, it's, actually what this is doing is making sure that our charter, uh, allows us to, uh, refer to the, the current revised statute.
Okay.
Because we have language in our charter that perhaps fit with previous state statute, but did not align with revised state statute.
With the current.
Right. And then that language did indicate, or state, whatever the current state statute was.
Okay.
And so, it's just simplified just saying, follow the state statute.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I did have a question, but I asked, uh, I called the feduniler to, to find out what the reason was, and it was also on the removal, and it didn't have anything as far as the salary upon removal. But I understand that that's going to be in the contract for whoever, uh, is it in your contract?
Yeah.
Yeah?
No.
Yes, it is. That's it, she's not believing.
Yes, ma'am. Move, moving these to contractual issues rather than that cumbersome stuff that we dealt with. Ms. Klein?
Uh, well, I also had, um, concerns with two point zero eight. And I think, you know, when the original charter being about, the freeholders were very concerned about the mayor, apparently at that time, having too much power, and there was, at that time, you know, the wheel of our system. And so, this was their way of doing away with that. Um, and so I, I think the original intent of the charter is very important, and I know that we can appoint, the mayor can appoint, and I'm okay with that, and it does say, you know, with consent of the council. However, um, I have an issue with removing members. I know it's always been practiced that, um, if there was an issue amongst whatever board or commission, it came from the members themselves as a, um, request or suggestion with a very valid reason why. And I think that really still needs to stay in place, that it should come from within the board. And then, once it does, then it comes to mayor and council to take action on that. So I, I, I do have concern with that. Um, apparently, we were all reading section two point.
Let me, let me, let me address that first. Yeah. Uh, this was a decision of the committee, uh, and which has a freeholder on it, and who, his, his position was to advise exactly what their intent was when they wrote the charter. And so we did have a freeholder sitting on this, providing that, that background information, and that information was provided, and the committee did in fact vote, um, the way that it is written, you know, so, I'm just indicating that you are, you may be correct, but the freeholder currently is indicating that this is, uh, appropriate.
And, yes, and I am well aware that Mr. Mueller is the freeholder that you're speaking about, and I know he was always concerned about, um, not giving, you know, that it should, that decisions should come from mayor and council, not just mayor. So, um, I'm just telling you what my concerns are. And, uh, apparently, we were kind of all reading section two point one four, a little bit different, cause I was kinda confused on that too, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, the other concern I had was posting at City Hall, um, we've always posted, we've always had a bulletin board. I didn't know that it would, to me, I think it's actually easier to post at City Hall on the bulletin board outside than, you know, if we can't get to the post office, you know, to post. Um, so I am concerned about that. Um, the other.
Ms. Coleman, would you like to answer? No?
We'll post here, I mean, we, when we had our other building at City Hall, we had the big billboard that we'd go and post outside, that was fine. We did purchase one for this building, so that will be up shortly. Um, it is easy just to post here, so, we're able to do either. We have to post at both post offices, no matter what, those are our, our designated posting locations, so we're required to do that either way.
We're actually posting more places than we.
Yes.
Right. Which was part of the discussion was that this is very specific to City Hall. You look at the next paragraph, they also wanted to add in the city's official website. So it wasn't that they were cutting back on the places that would be posted, they were actually looking for language that would allow flexibility in the way that it was posted.
And, and I get that, but I know that, and, you know, we will hear that not everybody has access to the F word computer, and, I don't know, I just, I know that we do post at the post offices, and I just, I don't know, I still think that we post at City Hall, that's just my opinion. And then, um, do you not have posted City Hall? Just taken out? But they want to take that?
They, they didn't wanna limit it, to say that paragraph was very specific to posting at City Hall, and their feeling was that was limiting.
We will be posting at City Hall, but what they indicated was that technology is changing all the time, and instead of us being hamstrung of indicating that we had to post at City Hall, we don't know down the line what technology will be available, and so it was just simply taken out.
Okay, and then the last thing I have is, um, number twelve, just take me out that, that whole section, um.
Ms. Higgins, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, then, as I see, we're in agreement with most, um, you and, and Ms. Jacomino have issue with, um, please give me the number of, of the, uh, the first one that you have.
Two point oh eight.
Point oh eight.
Point?
Two point oh eight.
Point oh eight?
Two.
Two oh eight. And that has to do with the mayor's ability to remove people from, okay. Uh, so, let's take that separately.
Okay.
And, um, let, we need a motion to, uh, include that, and then, uh, if it's voted down, then it will not be included. Does that make sense?
No.
None of them.
Why doesn't that make sense? We, we, we would normally be voting to include the whole thing.
Not necessarily, we, and.
That's what I'm doing then, is, is breaking the ones that you're discussing out. So, do we wanna make a motion that not get put in? And so if it's defeated, it does get put in, it's whichever way you want it.
Should we not take each suggestion and vote on them separately?
That's what I'm doing right now.
Are you starting with the first one? Or just about?
I'm, I'm, I'm starting with the ones that people have indicated they have issues with. Why do we, we don't need to discuss ones that no one has an issue on? Why do we, we don't need to discuss ones that no one has an issue on? So we're identifying the ones that you have an issue on. So you brought it up, Ms. Giacominho, would you like to make a motion on two point oh eight?
Yeah, I make a motion that we do not accept section two point zero eight, given the man.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, of those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Point of order.
Yes?
I'm confused. An aye vote will do what now?
Hers is that we do not accept it. So an aye vote means that it is not in the charter.
Got it.
Does everybody understand that?
Correct.
And let's do a row column, so that there's no-
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Nay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Giacominho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Nay.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Nay, motion passes four to three. Next. This goes, this goes to the voters. You both, you, you're, the last one, you was twelve, I'm sorry, twelve?
The other one that I had was of section seven point zero seven, the posting at city hall.
Posting at city hall. Could you make a motion, please?
I move that we not accept section seven point zero seven.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Ms. Cornetto.
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacominho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Nay.
Councilmember Johns?
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Nay, motion uh, is defeated five to two. Ms. Giacominho, next?
I'm doing that, just clarify.
Okay. I'm just checking. Ms. Klein?
Um, then the other one that I have is the, just the whole thing on 12, the article sixteen, section nine, I read. It's where the whole thing is just like that.
Of the past language? What, what would be your argument for that?
I don't know that it's really, you know, it talks about um, you know, powers and needs, and continuance of appointed boards and commissions. You know, I don't, I don't see that as passed.
Well, what, what it was is, if I might explain, we had boards and commissions before the charter came in. And all this is saying is, now that the charter has come in, the original charter, those boards and commissions that we had will still remain in power. And it's no longer applicable, because the charter's been with us all of these years. So this is our cake, and it, it, it doesn't mean anything. And so the commission says, let's get rid of it, because it doesn't mean anything. Because there isn't a change in power. You, you still want to?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to uh, accept the remaining articles of the charter? As provided by the chartering committee?
I move that we approve resolution R dash twenty dash eighteen, authorizing an election on certain of those city charter amendments to be held on November third, twenty twenty.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll second that. Ms. Cornetto?
Mayor Protem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominho?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes five to two. Uh, we will not be going into executive session for the purposes of the evaluation. You know, Ms. Cornetto, I will now ask- Ms. Lebeda, that's right, you're the, you're the tallyer guy, that's right. Ms. Lebeda, thank you for helping us with that.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Uh, very briefly, um, in terms of the evaluations that have come in, five evaluations have come in, and I reviewed the tallies relative to the five evaluations of Ms. Cornetto. She was in fact noticed that she had a right to go into executive session for purposes of her review and discussion of her evaluation. She has declined that right, and is comfortable with the evaluation process moving forward in a public session. And um, I would tell you, her evaluations were frankly exceptional. Um, there was the lowest that she received in any um, category was four point six. That's the absolute lowest. So she's exceeding expectations, and certainly meeting and exceeding expectations in almost every instance. Uh, the overall average was four point nine on her evaluation. So there was no single element evaluated at all that was less than the four criteria, four and five being the two highest, and she's overwhelmingly come through with a number of fives. If, with the council's pleasure, I'd like to read some general comments that came in from the council members. Uh, one was, Ashley is incredibly organized and efficient in the fulfillment of her job duties and descriptions. She goes far beyond those duties that are asked of her, and makes herself quite available even after normal business hours for members of the council and the public. The only suggestion this council member had for Atnes Coronado is that she should take more time for herself and her family. Other council members have consistently pointed out that her services are always efficient, always top notch, and always polite publicly. One council member writes, Ashley deals with people professionally, especially with those clients that might be upset or angry. She's able to get them to appreciate information, and she's able to provide it to them in an appropriate and professional manner. Ashley is consistently available to the mayor and council whenever needed, even on weekends. She's always organized, answers questions, and is always consistent with her follow-up. And again, you're hearing a theme here, a theme of professionalism. Uh, the last council member writes professionalism. We, I have respect for her conduct, she shows respect for others. She has knowledge, and she provides guidance to council. She's always cheerful, and she's an exceptional city employee. And I've given your results um, over to the human resources director, and she will have them then for Ms. Cornetto's file. Thank you for your participation supplying us.
Thank you, sir. So, the fact is, is that Ms. Cornetto um, has not had a salary increase since April of two thousand eighteen? And it's, is that my account?
That's correct.
Yes.
Ms. Lammers?
Do you want this sheet?
Yeah, if you have those for all the council people, let's go ahead and have that, sure. But am I not right about the salary increase?
It might have been by longevity.
Longevity.
It was a longevity increase.
It does say that.
Yes, yes.
So your la, your last performance increase was two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
A mere three and a half years ago. October sixteen.
I got it, thanks.
So you have before you, um, some proposed, some potentials, uh, salary increases of two, three, five, and six percent. So I would like to hear from the council. Ms. Coleman, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add. Um, I tell Nina and Ashley often that they make me look so good, I believe it.
That's easy, that's easy, that's crazy.
Okay, uh, the fact is, is that since there has not been a performance based raise for Ms. Cornetto in almost four years, uh, I make a motion that we provide her with a six percent raise.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am?
So what happens when she hits her ceiling? Which will be in two hundred? How is that going to be addressed?
Uh, so, we are currently working with the employee council. Um, and we've worked through the grade plan, then they will start working through a step plan. So essentially, there will be an opportunity to replace the current ceiling that, that the city is working with.
For all employees that are at ceiling?
For, for all employees across the board. So the step plan will come to you as soon as the employee council has completed that discussion.
And when you do this new step plan, is that going to be backed?
Uh, if the council will actually adopt it.
But what I'm saying is, is it going to then force people to be moved out because of it?
Uh, we have not committed to that at this time. Folks may find themselves on the step plan, um, very close to what their current salary is, but it will be a way to inform the council regarding pay classes that might be underpaid, or positions that we want to concentrate on increasing pay for in order to provide, well, actually to eliminate the pay disparity that we currently have in our system.
Any other questions? No questions? We have a motion, and we have a second. Of those in favor of the motion of a six percent raise, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding opening to the whiskey pool. I indicated that I would bring this forward because there was an awful lot of people questioning this and asking about it, and we needed to actually try to make some type of a decision on this in order to get that information out. And so with that, uh, Ms. Coleman and Mr. Harrow have got together, and uh, there's been information back and forth, and I will turn it over to, to Ben.
So in our discussion and our review of the guidelines, we reviewed the documents published by the Red Cross, and the guidelines um, published by the state, I want to make sure I'm saying the state health department. I, I do feel that they're very similar. Um, I feel that for the most part, the guidelines, we could come in and meet. However, there's, in the state guidelines, um, it's missing one very important part that the Red Cross mentioned. And that is that, based on studies or other reviews transmitted, it is reasonable to conclude that chest compressions and cardiopulmonary resuscitation have the potential to generate aerosols. Been thinking about that, and ever since this pandemic has come about, we've put an extraordinary amount of effort in trying to eliminate the physical contact our employees have. For instance, with our garbage and our recycling, we've, we've really tried to eliminate the amount of contact that they come into waste. Um, I'm sure we've done that in a lot of our apartments. The issue we have here is that there is no way for us to eliminate physical contact if we have to have a rescue. I know that there have been a number of, of ideas that, that were presented in public, a number of them which we did consider. But when it comes down to it, if somebody is drowning in the middle of a pool, we cannot throw out a, a lifeguard, or we can't do that. We have to come with, these lifeguards, and mind you, they are almost all teenagers. They would have to come into physical contact, they would most likely, they would eliminate the, um, the chest compressions, uh, they'll have to do those, if lots of innocent mentions. Um, most of the time, if somebody has water in their lungs or is going to cough up, they may vomit. Um, it also, it also goes on to say that, um, for drowning victims and pediatric patients, the benefit of positive pressure ventilations in addition to chest, I'm sorry, in addition to compressions should not be overlooked, mouth to mouth. I, I, I am concerned with putting teenagers lifeguards, knowing the physical contact with somebody that we may, we don't know whether they have coronavirus or not.
I have a couple of questions, I know Ms. Giacominho is very area, and so she probably people that enlighten us on some of this. I know as an example, in California, the beaches, um, they are not allowed to do mouth to mouth. It kind of seems like it takes part of their tools away. But a more fundamental question, under the CDC guidelines, if we were to follow the CDC guidelines, how many employees would we actually have to have, remembering that a lifeguard can't do anything but, lifeguard, they can't wipe down the chairs, they can't count people coming in, they can't do any of this other stuff, how many employees would we need to serve?
That is true, and if you look in reviewing that in our operations, we would have to have a minimum of six lifeguards per day.
That's six lifeguards per day and?
Six lifeguards on duty per day. We currently have, with, I mentioned that we currently have our lifeguard divisions open for application, we have eleven people that are live.
So, would we need extra people to wipe down stuff?
Yes.
And, and keep cleaning the restrooms?
Yes, absolutely. We, we would have a minimum of two lifeguards, um, actually on duty lifeguarding. Um, we would have somebody rotation, we have a rotation really, I anticipate, and it's not set in stone, but we would have a lifeguard coming around. And one of the recommended guidelines is that we have what I call the six quarters merger, and which can't be somebody that's on duty.
Sure. So, that's six, what, that's six a day, if we were open all the time, then you need a lot more than six, because you're going to have-
But they're part-time positions, so essentially it would be open with, with eleven lifeguards, we could be open three days a week. And, believe me, we talked through all the scenarios, and really what it comes down for me is that I'm doing the very best I can to protect the employees that we currently have. Um, the library is offering roadside service. Uh, I have asked that they wait until we see what the wave following the Memorial Day holiday is, so we're waiting fourteen days from the end of the Memorial Day holiday to make any determination about opening further, um, either at city hall, at the library, at public works, with recycling, and to open the pool, I'm being, I would be, being asked to hire teenagers and put them on the front line. And right now, I don't want to be on the front line. Um, if that teenager were my grandchild, I would pay them to not have to take this job this summer.
Okay, so the, um, the friends of the pool have, we have some money from last year for lifeguards, basically, yes. Now, we still have some money in our budget also, and allocated in July one more money. I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if, if we didn't open, do we have money to finish all the repairs that need to be done on the pool? I think there's decking that needs to be done.
Yes, yeah, and that's, that would afford us some opportunities to do some repairs. You did mention the deck, the deck is in need of, probably a new deck. And we could, there are some electrical upgrades that we can look at. I don't know the pricing on those, like everyone on the committee is saying that we could do all of those, but there are definitely upgrades that we could do if those funds can come available.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I was asked by the city manager also to review the issue of statutory protection for businesses and for public entities against someone contracting the COVID virus. Arizona does have a bill HB 201912 that is currently passed the House but going in front of the state senate. However, understand that unlike some states which have passed protections, Arizona is not contemplating passing a protection. Because Arizona has a constitutional provision called the Anti-Abrigation Act. And what that means is the legislature is powerless to limit somebody's right to bring a claim for civil damages. So what the Arizona version says is they're trying to adjust the evidentiary standard or the required proof to prove a claim. And the proposed statute would have clear and convincing evidence as the standard as opposed to a preponderance of evidence. So make it very harder to prove a case, but nonetheless, Arizona is not empowered, like other states, to create protections to businesses and public entities against lawsuits for the spread of the COVID virus. So the failure to follow CDC guidelines is currently being mitigated in some states where people contracted through businesses and other locations, public locations, where CDC guidelines weren't met and enforced, that's the key, met and enforced. Currently, public entities are being sued over that, as are businesses. And Arizona will not be in a position for creating an immunity, you know, in a viral context, that sounds odd, but a legal immunity for the city of Bisbee or any city for that matter. Rather, the state will still be available for suit, but they'll just have to prove claims by clear and convincing evidence, assuming this passes, and assuming they make it retroactive.
Thank you, sir, for that clarification, that's rather important. Ms. Giacominio?
Three things. I think one of the most important things that everybody seems missing is the fact that there is no standard care at this point for the COVID virus. So us putting lifeguards of any age at a swimming pool not only makes us vital, but negligent. The fact of the matter is, in order to do your job properly as a lifeguard, you have to listen and feel, get into facial contact if you're a victim. And if you're a teenager or anybody else, you could be asymptomatic, and so you could also be a carrier and spread the disease. So the big L word, as I always call it, the old libel, is going to be setting us up if we open. And I guess lastly, I am employed at this time, and I have decided I will not be a lifeguard because of this. This is my last hurrah because of the virus. I'm not going to put myself at risk, I'm not going to put my family at risk, and I'm not going to put my fellow lifeguard at risk. So that's how I feel after both seven years.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Paul?
COVID-19 is a very big issue, but it's not the only issue. I've been contacted by several people in the community, and I wasn't aware of it, but I've been told that there's a lot of work that needs to be done at that pool, including a pump, a filtration system, a solar system that doesn't work. The pool is a third empty full of algae. How long is it going to take Public Works to address all those issues and get the pool in a condition where it can be used?
It would take us about two weeks to get it ready. There is no problem with the pool that is, there is no problem with the pool, there are no issues that is a problem. The pool is in, there's little water in the pool, and there is algae in the pool, that's because we've legalized it. If we were to keep it full, that would mean that we would have to continually maintain it with chemicals. We would have to have the pump running throughout the day. During the winter time, we could turn the pump off, but during the summertime, that pool has to be running 24 hours a day. It would become very expensive. That's the reason why the pool is in, it looks like it's in disarray. It is not. It would take, what we would do is we would take a pump, pump the existing water out of there and refill it with fresh water.
So you have the money, you have the funds to do this?
Yes.
And how long will it take you to?
Yes, yes, it would take us about two weeks to get the pool ready for open. There is no issue that is a problem.
Okay, thank you. I have a question then. Mosquitoes, we keep hearing about mosquitoes today. Do we have a mosquito problem there?
We currently don't have a mosquito problem. If we do not open and the pool is kept with a little bit of water, we can always pump the water out, in fact, that's what we would do, probably pump the existing water out at a certain time, not fill it all away, but we can still put chlorine in it. We would not have a problem with mosquitoes.
I was going to say, if we pumped it out, we'd still have a monsoon issue.
Sure, absolutely.
So do we, my point being, can we make sure that we can alleviate some people's, whatever we do, some people's worry about the mosquitoes by doing some anti-mosquito stuff?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Ms. Giacominio?
I have to follow my comment.
That's fine.
I would like to see us readdress this issue, if not on a bi-monthly basis, at least once a month to assess what's going on in the community and what's going on in the state, especially in light of the fact that our cases are going up dramatically as a result of the partial opening or opening of the state, whatever you want to call it. This is an important issue. I would like to see the pool open as soon as possible. I just don't think, given the circumstances of the COVID-19 epidemic, that this is the right time to open the pool.
But the only downside to that that I see is that we may have 11 kids that are waiting to find out if they're going to have a job, and if we keep stringing them out, that's why I thought that it would be best to come and us make a decision for their edification also, so, but I do understand your point, that's a council decision.
I think we're in agreement on that point, but at this point in time, this is not the time to open the pool.
In regard to the complaints about the drain, years ago, when we used to drain, there used to be the floaters and fluorinators. You just chuck them in there, it's going to stay draining. We used to also to recover, the pool down in Douglas is about the same. The reason you leave water in there is because of the concrete and the deep end. If you don't put water in, it's going to cause an imbalance on it. Technically, if you just put those floaters, then it's not going to be an issue, and it's not going to do any strain on your pumps. I mean, most pools that shut down are external, that don't have, most towns that don't have money to do the same thing that we're doing right now.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
I'm sorry. So I wanted to bring this up for the benefit of a bunch of my constituents who have suggested it. But, and I'm not sure if this is a question for city manager or for legal, but what would our liability look like if we were using volunteers to do the lifeguard's jobs and sanitize things while the lifeguards are on duty?
I think what your attorney just shared with you was that the city would be liable in the event that someone came to us and said, my kids were at the pool, they came back sick, now my mom's sick, and it's the city's fault that they didn't take proper precautions.
So it would not be appropriate to use volunteer labor at this point?
No.
Be cheaper if it couldn't? Ms. Klein?
I understand that everybody wants the pool open. I mean, it's been open every summer since I was a kid, you know. I mean, that's where I took my swim lessons. But I think we would be negligent if we exposed these lifeguards to what they, you know, what they have to face. I know Pima County, they're not opening any of their pools. And I think the city of Tucson is only opening four. And our granddaughter is a certified lifeguard, and she lifeguards every summer. And there's no way on God's green earth that I would want her to do that at this time of day.
Yeah, and you know, I didn't mean to cut you off, but
No.
I have been trying to study some of the other cities that are doing this. And it reminds me of playing golf, that you have to call in for tee time. You have to call in, and the rules are, in many of these cities, you can swim for one hour, three times a week, from this hour to this hour, and you have five minutes to change, and you have 10 minutes to get out and dry off, then 10 minutes between people, and all this other sort of stuff. And it would be an absolute nightmare that I'm looking at of us trying to do that at this particular point, so. And it gives into the liability situation.
That is, that is one of the things that they're doing in Douglas, and one of the things that I foresee is the anger when you're telling someone to get out of the pool and unupdwn with their lax. You have that possible confrontation that's going to come up. You know, you have the contamination, we're not having lockers open. I mean, there's so many other facets that people don't think about, and that's the major.
All right, do we have a motion?
I believe that we not open the city pool this summer.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to not open the pool reluctantly this summer. All those in favor, signify by stating a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. The city man, city managers report.
Hi, so some of you may have noticed, like our police chief did, that there's a prior, that there's a prior ambulance in the city of Bisbee, and that is because we have another ambulance down. We have lots of challenges associated with our aging ambulance vehicles. And for that reason, we'll be bringing you a proposal to purchase a new ambulance at your next meeting.
I don't see any council comments? Mr. Higgins?
I'm going to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Those in flag, you can give a list, give a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all so much.